Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Those on the stage, you may take your mask off if you're so inclined with our social distancing. We want to welcome you all to the May 2021 regular school board meeting. Please let the record show that Angie Jacobs is not present tonight. She regrets she was not able to be here with us. But the other board members are present. Our first item will be visitor comments and so.
I believe we had one visitor comment.
Please give your name and tell us what you would like for us to know.
I'm Hannah Lane and I'm a softball player and junior here. And my main thing is like there have been very few changes to the softball fields like compared to other places. I just want like there to be more upgrades there and. Like some facilities get like yearly updates, but in like 10 years, I haven't seen much changes. And also I talked to the teammates of everybody of the team and they wanted like dugouts, new dugouts. That would be nice.
I'm sorry, since you're so distant, can you take off your mask? I can't understand it very well. I'm so sorry. And so you're discussing upgrades to the softball?
Yeah, and I talked to the athletic director. He said there is no anything in plan.
Don't know that we have anything planned. What kind of upgrades are you think would be appropriate?
Um, like more of a maybe a new dugout or a batting cage because our batting cage is like if you hit it a certain way, just the ball keeps going. And if it's really windy, they have to hold it back because it's not secured. And the dugouts like they just haven't been updated in like I think 35 years, what John Chance said. So I just think it would be nice to be more updates. About it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look into it. Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is the consent agenda. So we have the approval of minutes for April 19th, 2021 regular board meeting and the April 28th, 2021 executive meeting. We have the treasurer's report for April of 2020. Mr. Dernold, the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have gross wages on April 9th, 2021 for $635,000. $84.38 for gross wages mini payroll on April 22nd, 2021 for $334.34. Gross wages on April 23rd, 2021 for $637,954.10. We have vouchers and pre claims prepaid for 1 to 430 of 21. We have regular vouchers for claims on 5/17/2021 for $237,832 and I'm sorry, it's 237,832.17 for sale claims and vouchers, 5/18 for $995.09 for a grand total of $2,623,316.65.
Thank you, Mr. Dernold. We have a number of donations. TriKappa has been, long been a big supporter of RBB and they have $100 to the EHS STEAM program, $100 to the EHS Arts Award Spring Show, $75 for the EPS Art Program, $100 to the EPS STEAM Program, $75 for the EIS Art Program and $100 for the EIS STEAM Program, $100 to the Junior High STEAM Program, $75 to the Junior High Art Award Spring Show, $100 for the Student Assistance Fund. So it's considerable donations from TriKappa. We also have $250 from Coontz Construction, Inc. for student athletes in the 12 Sports Program. There was also a donation of hand sanitizer from Sands Club to the Junior High. And there's also an anonymous donor who is covering the cost to send Mrs. Bruce's virtual students to Bradford Woods. So we appreciate all those donations. We also have personnel, resignations, retirements, nonrenewals, leaves and terminations A through I and appointments and transfers A through E. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval. A second.
Leading seconded. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda?
Just one personnel item that I can't overlook. Jerry Bland is going to be leaving us and I hate to see him go. I had such a, I really enjoyed working with him over the years and but it's such integrity in a man and the fact that he's going across the county line doesn't make me real happy, but I know that he does like a challenge and maybe he will find one.
Yeah, I would like to add to that too about Jerry Bland. I'm going to miss him because he has a great name and we've had some interesting meetings. We had a meeting with Jerry Pittsford, Jerry Bland and myself, one meeting and it did get a little confusing, but.
And plus Jerry.
Yeah, but Jerry Bland, he's just a solid, solid leader and he's somebody you can always count on. So we're going to miss him, wish him good luck and even though he's going to be down the road, hopefully we'll get to see him from time to time. And so I just wanted to add my little bit to support Jerry.
I feel the same way about Jerry. Also want to commend the Sands Club for third donation for hand sanitizer. They took care of all the law enforcement agencies around McAllen too. We appreciate that very much.
I just want to thank Mr. Bland too. I was just reading a text I sent him last week. Congrats on your new role at OV. Hate to lose you, but understand your desire for a new challenge. Talked to Mr. Boating House today. He's very excited about you joining his team there. So I know he's going to be missed, but he's going to be still contributing, doing well for the kids in the area. So appreciate.
I'm not sure what's going to happen with the Bland stamp now.
Yeah, the muzzle white stamp doesn't have the same brand.
All right, anything further? Or nothing? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for him. Now we have the business manager's report. Mr. Irwin?
So you've got up there, you've got cash flows and then also have a piece up there from Stiefel that I'll talk about later as well, just to fill you in on some resale of the bonds. So starting with the education fund, again, keeping it brief, the education fund is staying right where we expected it to be. Again, we still project to be about even on year end balance. If you look at the beginning year balance and where we project to be with year end balance, we've used the most up to date information that we've gotten through the legislature and the DOE to make projections as accurate as possible, as accurate as possible as they can be at this time. And so we will continue to update those as we normally do. Debt service, there's nothing much to note in this fund for April. We had no receipts and we paid a small trustee fee during the month and that was expected. Operations fund came in about where we expected as well. Couple of things to note from the month of April in the operations funds, we paid for the two buses that we ordered earlier in the year. You pay for those on arrival, which is why those claims are a little higher. If you remember, those are about $105,000 apiece. Our utility bills this past month were much higher. If you remember a lot of the bizarre weather that had happened over the course of the country, they had that freeze off in Texas, which caused our gas prices to spike and our bills were a lot higher in utilities this month because of those things. And so it kind of amped that up a little bit, but it still was pretty close to what we had expected to be in claims, but it was higher. Those two factors, you know, played into that. We also updated the cash flows just to show the actuals on the 2021 circuit breaker. We got that report this past week. Those came in a little bit higher than we had on our budget estimate when we went through the budget process. But with all of that said, we still feel like we're going to end in a very comfortable range at the end of the year with where we like to be in the operations fund. So that's definitely a positive thing to keep in note and to continue to work on that. I've already started working on the 2022 projections, cash flows for all three of the major funds and continuing to work on those now that the legislature pieces is there. Also getting more information from policy analytics as we work on that tax based study that's helping me as well. So hopefully that will be something that's fruitful to the corporation as we continue to plan forward thinking. So I want you to turn to that piece. I gave you the piece of paper from Stiefel that talked about the bond savings. Back in March, we brought to you the resolution to be able to go out to sale for the resale of 2019 bonds. Long story short, the school realized over $1 million worth of debt payments, future debt payments on interest rates. So the interest rate went down by a little over a percent and a half over the course of the life of the loan. And again, that's a little over $1,032,000 in savings on future interest, which is pretty remarkable. The pieces that played a part in that are obviously market conditions improved from the March meeting to the time of sale. The other thing that played a huge factor in it was that the school's credit rating, when we went through the rating process with S and P, went from a triple B plus to an A minus with a positive outlook as well. And speaking with Stiefel, I think one of the things that just to give a shout out to the board and to Dr. Sanders is that very few people in this time were getting rating upgrades during resale of bonds or just sale of bonds in general. And not only did we get the rating increase, but we also got the positive outlook, which is something that's very positive moving forward, which means that in the future, if there's future sale of bonds at that time, there's a very likelihood that if things continue to trend in the way that they're trending, that we'll continue to see another rating improvement. So wanted to give you an update on that piece as well. You guys have any questions?
But thank you for all the hard work and doing with that as well. The financial management that's been going on here the last several years has really, really improved our situation and that improves our rating and so we appreciate the savings that comes from that, plus the hard work that you put in there.
And thank you to Stiefel and Bose McKinney as well that helped us through the process. Ferguson Law, just everybody involved with that process. It was very smooth and obviously went very well for the school corporation, so.
And I just want to echo that. I mean, that's, that's, that's not a 50,000 or say, that's over a million dollars. And that's just for being proactive. Appreciate what you and Stiefel have done and Dr. Sanders and the rest of the board on managing things better, so kudos.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have consideration to approve the agreement with the Sharp Facts, Core Facts system and Dr. Sanders.
Yes, Rick Rotten, our Director of Technology, not only does a good job with making sure that our technology is running smoothly, but he is, has a habit, a very good habit, of trying to save the school corporation money. And his most recent effort is with faxing. We can utilize some of our same equipment, but remove our analog phone lines and the analog phone lines cost the corporation $3,500 a year in fees. And by moving forward with the proposed Sharp Agreement, we would save an estimated $1,973 in the first year with additional savings in future years. And we might say, you know, $1,973, maybe that's not a lot, but it is and it all adds up. And that's why we end up in a better financial situation and we're able to achieve a better credit rating because those little things turn into big things. Rick's here tonight and I'll let him see if he wants to add anything to what I just said.
Thank you. You've covered it very well for me. So yeah, the savings that we're seeing projected will be somewhere in five years, about 21,000. So that little $1,900 adds up over a course of time. And the number we're using right now is we have seven fax machines, so that's what these are based on. But we will be adding another fax machine or fax service once the new EECC building is finished and they receive their equipment. So we will have a slight change in our number, but it's going for the positive side for them. And again, some people ask me, why do we keep fax machines around? Unfortunately, there's still a need for it by the medical industry. So that's how we receive our student information out there, going to be in or out of school from the doctor's notes and things that they just haven't fully felt comfortable doing with HIPAA and over an email yet. So that's why the fax machines still are around, but our numbers of faxes that are coming in are greatly reducing over time as more and more people become more comfortable with the email and scan feature. The other thing that will have a cost savings is that not all the faxes are going to print immediately, so they're going to be stored and then released so someone can go up to the machine and release it after they see what it is. And if it's just a spam fax, they can delete it. So we're also going to see some reductions hopefully in our fax, or excuse me, copiers on paper and ink and so other assets to the copiers. So hopefully we'll have more savings as we continue, but this is a small, minor one, but it's enough to be moving forward on. And then again, I request your approval and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
We appreciate the work that you have been doing to help make us more economical, more efficient and it's, it is really helping. You know, this is just one of many things that you've come to us with, so we really appreciate that hard work and keeping an eye out on, you know, stuff that we wouldn't think about, but it's there and so we appreciate you thinking about it.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move a second. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a consideration to approve of resolutions to transfer funds to Rainy Day. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so I presented you guys with the resolution for that transfer to Rainy Day for an up to amount of $500,000 from the operations fund to the Rainy Day Fund. A little over two years ago, the board and the administration kind of set forth the goal to continue to restore balances and reserves, one of those being in the Rainy Day Fund. Again, there for those times when unexpected bills, projects, revenue shortfalls come in place, that's there obviously and to safeguard the school corporation from financial troubles. The resolution says up to for a reason. It allows me over the course of the year to evaluate cash flows to see whether or not we end up needing to do, end up being able to do 500,000 or whether or not we need to do less. And so I've kind of put that into the cash flows to show you what that would look like presently with the current cash flows. But obviously we still need to get to our June tax dispersment settlement, see how those things come in. And obviously as things continue to flow the next couple of months, we'll go through that process and decide. But with that, I ask for your guys' approval of this resolution.
I move to approve the resolutions to transfer the funds.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any questions or comments?
When is this, when is that dollar amount determined of when the transfer will occur?
Of when it will occur?
Yeah, when will that be?
The resolution allows for it to happen anytime during this calendar year. So the resolution would be good through 2021. So it allows me to do it anytime during the course of this year. I plan to do some during June. Again, once we've seen that June dispersment of taxes come in, we'll decide kind of what we feel comfortable with at that point, based on what the cash flows and projections are showing. I don't want to move it and then all of a sudden realize later on in the year, maybe we shouldn't have moved that much and then we would have to go through a process to move it back out. And so we'll kind of determine that as we kind of see where we're at in June.
Good, and this will be in addition to our current.
Yeah, so right now, yeah, it'll be addition to what we already have.
Perfect, thank you.
And would there just be one movement? I mean, could you say move 200,000 in June and then decide you want to do another 200,000 later?
Yeah, you absolutely could do that. And that was the reason I worded it up to amount. If I would have worded it specifically, then it would have had to have been that amount. And so I put that wording on there to give us that flexibility so that we can make some decisions in the interim.
Okay.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding with the town of Ellisville to construct a sidewalk trail. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, we have been working with the town of Ellisville to construct a trail, which will come up from 46 up Poplar Drive and then turn on a school drive to Edgewood Drive and on up to the high school. The town of Ellisville has committed to providing the labor, saving us a lot of money. The school corporation will pay for the materials and we have to take care of any easements. There are easements that are with the town of Ellisville and then there's a little piece of that path that is actually going to require an easement from the state. And so we are, we have confidence of being able to get the easement with the town of Ellisville and we will be working with the state. That'll be just a little more to that, that easement, but Christine Bartlett with Ferguson Law is working on that right now. So as a courtesy though, even though there aren't any easements that are going along the property of a homeowner, we are already in the process of contacting, we're developing a list of names right now is where we are, of contacting the residents along the path. And Mike Farmer with the town of Ellisville is working with us so that we know exactly who to contact. We will pay for the materials out of the combination of our general obligation bond and also grant money. Vicky Coffey, our Director of Nutrition Services, wrote a grant, it's called Tactical Urbanism Grant. It's through the Indiana Department of Health and it was for $10,000. And the purpose of it is to provide a place for a physical activity in a community. So I think a trail definitely meets that criteria. We've met several times with Mike Farmer in the Ellisville Street Department and they went over the costs of the project and gave us an estimated cost of 28,000 and for the materials. And so we will be taking that out, like I said, out of the combination of the general obligation bond and the Tactical Urbanism Grant that Vicky Coffey wrote. It's just really a pleasure to work with the town of Ellisville. We met around a table and they asked such great questions and you could just tell in their faces and their voices that they really care and they want to do something nice, not only for RBB, but the entire community. So we have already had the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding approved by the town of Ellisville. That happened on May 10th and so tonight we're asking the school board to approve the same MOU.
We have a motion.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Move a second.
Just a couple of comments, just one comment here. This is a vision, should call it of Mike Farmer. You know, he doesn't, he doesn't like to be patted on the back very much, but he has a vision to move these trails all over Ellisville, which is if you look at the, when people move into a city, of course they look at schools and parks and recreation and trails are right there, right behind the schools. So you know, this is, this goes right along with our, all our updating that we've been doing here the last several years with our system and you know, this should be a real great step as far as completing that vision he has. So we're real excited about it.
There are a large number of residents who like to walk around the schools.
This will make it much easier.
And it's really, really been.
Get your dogs on there and off you go.
Beneficial to the, to the town, to the, to the school and so I do appreciate the good relationship that we have with the town of Ellisville. Just seems to get better and better all the time.
I just question about the route there along Edgewood Drive. I presume we aren't going to have to take out any of those trees, are we?
No.
Good.
No.
We're going to meander in and out of Ellisville.
That'll be fine.
I did have one question on the nature and thanks, thanks, Dr. Sanders for reaching out and connecting with the homeowners along in there because that's, that's important that to open up that communication.
As far as the path itself, is it going to be concrete, blacktop?
It'll be blacktop.
Okay. All right, perfect. And then with the end, the end goes to connect the high school to the junior high through another path, correct?
Right, so the, the next phase will be working on a, a path, a trail, sidewalk, whatever you want to call it, between the high school and the junior high and make that connection there. We do have a lot of students who, who walk between the junior high and high school and we would like to provide a safe place for them to do that. We are in the process of looking for additional grants to fund that next phase.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next is consideration to award a bid for the Innovative Learning Center. Dr. Sanders?
I am so excited for this agenda item. You know, we've been working on ready schools for quite some time and now we're starting to really make some progress and you should, hopefully in June, I would like to be able to have the board meeting up at the new multipurpose room so we could show you the design labs up there, some great things that are happening. And we want to have that same thing here at the high school and that'll happen in our Innovative Learning Center. On April 27th, we had a bid opening and we received bids from four different companies and the lowest bid was Tear Step Company Incorporated. And in the board packet, you're able to see the bids from all four companies. George Link is here tonight and I've asked him to come forward and share some more information for you and also maybe to answer some of your questions.
Okay, as Dr. Sanders said, on April 27th, we received an open bids. Tonight, we are recommending that the project be awarded for the base bid to Tear Step Company Incorporated for $769,000. And this is going to be a little bit of a different twist, that alternate number two actually gets awarded to Building Associates for $264,700. The reason for that is alternate number two has to do with going into the old administration building and renovating that for the, the edge. They're time sensitive, you know, we have to be in the new administration building before we can go in and tear into the old one. The Innovative Learning Center will probably be done before the new admin building is complete. So the original plan was I was going to issue it as a PR to Building Associates to do that work. They bid on it and it just so happens that their alternate price was the lowest of the four, so I said, well, we could just do that as a change order as long as they're in agreement. And they were in agreement to that. And that way it ties that work with their, their timeline on it. The concern with several of the contractors was that they'd have to pull off and come back at a later date to finish that portion of the work if it was accepted. So now we don't have that issue.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval. A second.
Questions, comments?
They answered. One of them.
Sound good.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering how that was going to work with the chiller.
I'm very excited for it.
Substantial completion date for it is at the end of October. It could run a little bit longer just depending on some delivery times. Once we get into those, we're seeing some long lead items. And in all honesty, at some point in time, we're probably going to be looking at what we're going to utilize for the roof structure of the new admin and the bus maintenance because Bar Joyce right now are forever away. We're seeing lead times for projects. And we're seeing lead times for projects that we're bidding now that are telling us first quarter of next year before we can get them. So, we're looking at alternative roof structures that we could utilize that are more readily available on that.
So, as far, as far as the, the parking, George, is that going to be taken care of first, expanding the parking lot?
Expanding the parking lot for, you talking about for the admin building?
Correct.
The bus maintenance lot is supposed to be finished this summer.
That'll be done before the start of school.
Yeah, we've got a plan, they're moving the buses out. June second, bringing temporary fencing in to create the temporary lot, the secured lot for them on the third and then they'll, they've already cut out the, the expanded portion of it, they're just waiting for the rest of the lot to be cleared, but it'll be done and turned back over. It won't, you know, it won't be a hundred percent complete because there's some areas we can't close up completely finally until the admin building's done, but the lot will be ready to receive the buses.
And that, once it's all completed, that'll take out the need to use that side parking lot for buses?
Yes.
Completely, okay.
And there should be room there for now, for the van trailers and things like that to go in that lot as well.
Perfect.
Nice to get those in the fence lot.
Correct, and then there's, there will be room for growth if-
That's why I said for now, there's room for those in there. Eventually, they'll get pushed back out again.
That's, okay. Yeah, just concerned like continued growth if some of the bus routes come back to the corporations or room in there.
I think we've got space and don't quote me on this because it's been a while since I've counted up, it's either forty-two or forty-four bus spaces in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Our next item is consideration to approve HVAC alternate for the EPS EIS chiller. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so during the bid process for the HVAC work through the 2019 bond, one of the alternate projects that was bid out by the winning bidder of Commercial Services was for the EPS EIS chiller. There's two of those on site there and this is for us to pick up and replace one of those at this, this time. I provided you in the board packet that the quote, again, they re-quoted that and again, the expected total of this is a hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars and it'll get paid from the bond proceeds. So, with that, I recommend your approval.
I move approval.
A second.
Questions, comments?
Appreciate that.
Those things are coming up on twenty-
Twenty-some years, yeah.
Track of this and then found a one was available and if we don't get it now, it may be a while with the delays that-
Yeah, like George talked about, the delays are, are crazy long and, and so, we were lucky enough that they had one available in stock and so, we have that secured, which is, is definitely to our benefit, so.
That's great, that's great. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to approve a revised calendar for the 21-22 school year. Dr. Sanders?
Thank you. Next school year, we have some opportunities for professional development training for our teachers and to, in order to get the, those dates scheduled for the training, we needed to revise the calendar. The first change was, or is that, we had parent teacher conferences scheduled for September twenty-third and twenty-fourth and those were going to be e-learning days. The only time we could have some needed training for the junior high and high school teachers is to be able to move those dates to September seventh and eighth. The training is called TBRI, Trust-Based Relational Intervention Training, that the elementary teachers have already gone through. And so, on September seventh and eighth, those days will now be e-learning days. And on September seventh and eighth, the elementary teachers will be conducting parent teacher conferences since they've already had the training and then the junior high and high school teachers will have the TBRI training. And then, the second change is making October first an e-learning day. We have been working in, over the last several years with our teachers on performance, or a professional learning community, sorry, and that we are going to revisit and have some retraining on that. We have new staff, give us some new energy in our PLCs and so, we're, we're choosing to, to make you, October first an e-learning day and, and so that the teachers can have this corporation, corporation-wide training. Now, on all those days, we will work around the professional development activities and the parent teacher conferences. We will work around what we need to do to make connections with our students for e-learning. And so, all that will be scheduled so that we can make sure that we provide what we need to, to provide to make the, those e-learning days quality, but yet, provide our teachers some time to get this much-needed training. So, I recommend revisions to the calendar.
Motion?
I'll move approval for the revisions to the 2021-22 school year calendar.
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a couple-
Twenty-two should be about ten years from now, right?
One, the train, the PLC training, who's going to be, are we doing that ourselves?
No, we will have a, an associate, we're working with Solution Tree and they will be providing a trainer for that. We haven't narrowed down the specific associate who, from Solution Tree will provide that training, but we are, we're working on that.
And then, I presume that this was discussed with the association, the teachers representatives? I think the, the change of the parent teacher conferences, are the elementary teachers okay with going that early in the year, September seventh and eighth seems pretty early?
We've had those discussions with the elementary folks and they feel like it will help them to identify issues a little sooner and, and be able to make a more positive difference.
Anything further?
Just one quick question, has there been any discussion about, thinking a year and a half ago, where Wednesday mornings was reserved for teacher development time, is that off the table for next year?
No, we will, when school starts in, in the fall, we will have delayed start Wednesdays once again. This semester, this actual last quarter of the school year, we've started the delayed start Wednesday for elementary, but with all the changes, we just felt like that was a little more difficult to pull off for the high school. But when we start school in the fall, we'll be going back to that delayed start Wednesday that will, will really help us to be able to do this PLC.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have consideration to amend the 2021 contracts for the elementary assistant principals. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so, as you probably unfortunately remember, the start of the 2020-21 school year, it was a, a very crazy time with trying to come up with our plan for reopening school and we laid out a plan and then the, the numbers grew a little worse and we ended up having to delay the start of school by a couple of weeks. At any rate, based on when we, some people started their contract year, it didn't end up correctly at the end of this school year. And two of those people were our elementary assistant principals, Jerry Pittford and Andy Scholp. They started last year on July twenty-seventh, which would have made their last day May twenty-sixth. Well, with the last day of school being May twenty-eighth and the last day for the teachers being June first, it doesn't work out so well. So, we've added three days to their contract, so we're amending their 2020-21 contract and we're adding three days, so it'll go from a hundred-and-ninety-three days to one-hundred-and-ninety-six days for this school year only in order to adjust for what happened with COVID-19 this year. So, just ask for your approval.
I move approval.
A second.
Any questions, comments?
I just appreciate what the administrators did this year. Administrators, staff, teachers, everybody. And I, once again, thank my lucky stars that I decided to retire when I did.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to amend the 2021 and 21-22 contracts for the director of the Edgewood Early Childhood Center. Dr. Sanders?
Right, so, we'll be asking to make an amendment to Mr. Wooden's 2020-21 contract and a different change for his 2021-2022 contract. For the 2021 contract, it's a similar situation to our elementary assistant principals. Mr. Wooden started the, the, his contract year on July twentieth. Mr. Wooden has a hundred-and-ninety-eight day contract, which would make him also having May twenty-sixth as his last day. And so, we're asking to amend his 2021 contract, adding three days, so it'll go from a hundred-and-ninety-eight days to two-hundred-and-one days and that would be just for his 2020-2021 contract. For his 21-22 contract, it'll go back to a hundred-and-ninety-eight days. For his 21-22 contract, the change here that we would like to make is related to what Mr. Wooden has been doing for the Edgewood Early Childhood Center. As you have heard from different reports, Mr. Wooden has led his staff to achieve a Level Three, past a quality level and, and so, he, that is really going to enable us to attract more preschoolers, provide an increase in revenue for the, the preschool. And the second part of that is the Edgewood Early Childhood Center will be finished, we hope, by the start of the school year, but Mr. Wooden will be moving to actually running a building by himself, where right now, the, the EECC is within the primary school and, and don't get me wrong, Mr. Wooden works very hard at that, but he also has two other administrators right there near his office to help him with different issues. While moving over to the new EECC building, he, although it'll be connected, he will basically still be running his own building and so, I'm recommending that we increase Mr. Wooden's salary for his 2021-2022 contract from fifty-one thousand to fifty-six thousand, an increase of five thousand dollars. It's just a great benefit to have someone, Mr. Wooden's caliber, working for our school corporation and I look for many more years of great things to come and I recommend your approval.
I move approval of the recommendation on the director of the Early Childhood Center contract.
I'll second.
You can second, any questions, discussion? We'll be continuing, continuing to expand our class sizes as well and responsibilities just can, continue to grow, so, we appreciate that very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration to approve EPS EIS walk-in freezers and coolers improvements. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so, I provided you with the quotes that was sourced by Vicky Coffey and Arnold Caldwell, but Vicky, I has identified some of the necessary improvements to, for her walk-in freezers and coolers at the elementary schools. Right now, the, the winning quote was the, a local vendor and that was Goldie and Sons. The expected total is twenty-nine thousand dollars and that includes the work for both schools as well as the warranty. And again, the, one of the things that I, I kind of wanted to mention as well, just kind of a shout-out to Vicky, is that the purchase is going to be made through the lunch fund because of her, you know, great management of that fund and everything that has to do with our lunch program for our kids and so, the purchase will be made through that fund. So, with that, I ask for your approval.
Make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any questions, discussions?
I couldn't read the, the handwritten quote. Can you kind of give me a sense of exactly what is going to be included in this?
Yeah, so, they're working on some condensers, it's kind of like HVAC work, but there's compressors and condensers and evaporators and stuff like that, a lot of the mechanical equipment that goes along with the walk-in freezers and coolers.
I know that Goldie and Sons, we've worked with them for many, many years. Many, many years.
So, this is, this is being paid similar fashion to what the, the bus was paid for, the food, the food truck, right? From her account?
Oh, yeah.
That's just, okay, perfect, well, kudos to Ms. Coffey then.
Yeah, she does a great job and she's always forward-thinking and, and looking, looking ahead, sitting down and talking with me through different ideas that she has with Dr. Sanders and so, she does a great job of, of keeping track of those things and looking into the future to, to see what all she can, she can do.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration to approve an agreement with the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission, a very exciting one. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so, we were very pleased that the Monroe County Redevelopment Committee met in April and approved a renewal of our agreement, which will continue the commitment of two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars annually. The first agreement that we've had with, with the RDC has funded our STEAM initiatives, mostly our STEAM coaches and as we mentioned to the Redevelopment Committee that we started, which we started meeting with them last August to make that connection from the STEAM initiative to the Ready Schools Initiative. And we wanted them to understand that, that Ready Schools is not a separate initiative and really, the STEAM initiative, initiative could not have gone better because it led to an expansion of what STEAM was all about and that's where we are with, with Ready Schools. And the RDC, they are great partners. We are required to make a presentation twice a year to the RDC and they're just always so interested and always demonstrating how much they're in support of what we're doing to help our students to learn, to prepare themselves for tomorrow's world. And that's the biggest, big part of, of Ready Schools is enabling our students that when they leave high school, they are prepared to enter the workforce, that they're prepared to be contributing members of the community and that's what we're, we're trying to develop and the RDC has agreed with us and they've, have approved another six years with the RDC.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I move approval. And just a little pat on the back for Mr. Kerr. He was big instrumental in that first one that came through, and we really appreciated that. That's, that's, that's really started a wonderful, wonderful thing for us here. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Durnall, for, for reminding me. I did want to thank, there are a lot of people that Dana definitely right at the top of the list. I want to thank Brad Tucker also for his help. Christine Bartlett, she was a big contributor. Jamie Miller, our coordinator of Ready Schools, and our Ready Schools coaches, Megan Scott and John Kerr and, and Matt Irwin. We're all, it was a team effort.
I'll second the motion and the thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you. I want to thank, thank Dana again for getting this initiated ten years ago?
Six.
Six years ago, okay. All right. And then I also want to make a public thank you to Ms. Cox from the HT. Her article after the last RDC meeting was very informative. I thought she did a nice job of covering what transpired at the meeting. So thank you, Ms. Cox.
Because the RDC controls the funds from the Tiff District. The West Side Tiff District is greatly in Richland Township and our school corporation. And part of the Tiff funds can be used for education, especially as it relates to the workforce. And STEAM was, was, was there because of the types of jobs that are, are in the Tiff District. And then now even more so with the Ready Schools Initiative, we truly are preparing students who choose to, to go into those fields to be able to walk into those jobs that are, are here in our, in our Tiff District here. And so again, we started that relationship six years ago with the first round of grants. And, and we were very, very happy and appreciative of the RDC to continue to work with us for another six years. We really, really do appreciate them and, and all the commissioners that, that work with us on that. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a revision to our Neola policy regarding voting. Dr. Sanders?
Right. This is also an action we took last, I believe it was last July, on this policy as we were trying to adjust to having school board meetings virtually. And we, through the efforts of Ferguson Law, we were able to revise our, our policy, zero-one-six-seven-point-one, to adapt to those changes. Well, the, this past legislative session, the legislators approved House Bill fourteen thirty-seven, which made some additional revisions. And what this policy revision will, will end up helping us is it'll make us in line with the changes that the legislators made this past session. This is on first reading, so we'll bring it back to you in June for approval. And Christine's here, if you have any questions for Christine. In the board packet, you received a red line version, which shows the, the different changes.
This will continue to let us attend by Zoom if we need to or out of town or something, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But there has to be a quorum physically present.
There's a little bit more to it than what we had last July.
Two in a row, maybe something like that. And they had to come back, yeah.
Christine, is there anything you wanted to add?
You already hit on some of the requirements through in the new statute, but it's some minutes requirements that we have to make sure in there. Some voting requirements, at least fifty percent. Or in your case, three board members must be present in person. There's a requirement that the board members cannot attend more than fifty percent of the meetings per year electronically, and no more than two consecutively. And there are exceptions that you'll see in the policy if somebody's ill. Those are exceptions to those restrictions.
And then also, I'm sorry. There's also content, if, if budget or certain things are, are, I saw reduction force, other things that you have to be here to do those. And I, I, I agree with the, I think it's, yeah, it was, it was good legislation.
And this is universal statewide?
It is. Actually, prior to this, state entities were allowed to do this. This is just catching you guys up to what the state entities could already do. You have to have a policy in place to be able to do it. So we've got to make sure that our policy aligns with what the new statute permits.
Okay.
We'll bring that back next month for vote. Thank you very much. Now we have miscellaneous information. Dr. Sanders?
I don't have anything for miscellaneous, so we can move on.
All right. Jump right into the superintendent's report then.
Very good. Just want to start off because it does relate to what I'm going to talk about tonight. But with, as we have seen in the news recently with some of the changes in, in our county with facial coverings and masks, we've been getting a lot of questions about how that impacts school. And we, as a school corporation, like every other school, public school in Indiana, we are still operating out of the Governor Holcomb's executive order. And so for the rest of this school year, facial star, facial coverings will still be required in our K to twelve facilities. And also, other safety measures such as social distancing will remain. And I, I bring that up because I want to talk a little bit tonight about, to me, it's very exciting and be able, be able to talk about our two thousand twenty-one commencement ceremony for Edgewood High School, which will be June fifth at eleven o'clock. And it will be in person. If you remember, last year, we livestreamed the, the, the presentation. And, and we were able to allow our students to walk across the stage. But this year, they will be able to do that in person in front of other parents. Each student will be allowed five guests. And we really tried to maximize the, that number, but yet stay safe with, because we're still operating under a pandemic. Facial coverings will be required. Our graduates will be wearing masks, but when they get up and cross the stage, you'll be able to take their masks off. The bleachers will be marked to indicate appropriate social distancing for our different families. Our plan for commencement was submitted a couple of times to the Monroe County Health Department. And we worked with them to come up with what we're going to do for our commencement ceremony on June fifth. So we're very excited about that. And, you know, this has been a very challenging year for all of us. So I'm very excited to share with you tonight the different end-of-the-year celebrations that will happen at each of the schools, the different awards programs. And when those dates will, will, those events will take place on the dates and times. And then this Wednesday night, the seniors' honor night will be here at Edgewood High School. Our last day of school is Friday, May twenty-eighth. We're almost there.
It, so, so many times this year felt like it was dragging on in so many ways. And in so many other ways, it just seemed like it flew by.
Yeah.
It just, interesting how it could feel like both ways sometimes.
I, I wanted to mention one more thing. Hannah Lane, who spoke tonight, I've reached out to her and emailed her and invited Hannah to meet with myself, Mr. Ackerman, the, Mr. Hammett, Mr. Irwin, so we can just kind of dive a little deeper into what she's looking at in, in order to make some improvements at the softball field. I wish she was still here. I kind of wish I would have said this earlier, but it's, it's very impressive that a student would get up and, and on her own come and, and make a presentation to the board.
It was Hannah Lady? What's her last name?
Lane.
Lane, okay. I didn't catch it. All right. Now we have RBBEA comments. Mr. Yules?
Good evening, everyone. A lot of comments, I guess, but never going to be too long. Dr. Sanders, thanks for clarifying publicly the mask requirements for the last nine days. I've had freshmen ask me all day about that, of course, but they would. They're anxious too as well. As you said, yeah, right now it feels like it is dragging on. There's no doubt about it. But we're getting there. The magic number on my board today was nine. So we are, we are about there. And I've told some of my non-teacher friends that, you know, all in all, I feel like we've, we've done pretty well looking back. We've gotten through, weathered the storm and getting these kids through and crossed the finish line. Mr. Tucker, I think you mentioned Emily Cox. Just a quick shout out. I know Stacia Myers was more than thrilled with the article in the paper the other day. She was talking to me about in the lunchroom. She sounded like a, like just a giddy little person. She said, oh, yeah, it was a great time, this and that. And I had missed the paper sometimes, I do. But it's hanging up in my room right now. So thank you, by the way, a quick shout out. Just a couple of personnel items, just to echo what Mr. Demoss and Dr. Sanders said about Jerry Bland. I would describe him as a straight shooter. I've always appreciated his straightforwardness and just, just always to the point. And you knew what you were going to get from him, so I wish the best of luck for him as well. Big shoes to fill. And also, normal stuff for you, but on the new hires, we have a couple of new math teachers because we're losing a couple of young ones in my math department. You know, they're moving on to different things, and it's good for them. Didn't go unnoticed to me that you replaced them both because for years, this is now year twenty-seven for me, believe it or not. And we've always had six math teachers, and it's held just fine. But for the last several years, and I know Mr. Ackerman can attest to this, we've, we've had a need for a seventh one. And we finally got one this year. A young lady is doing well. And it's, it's made the difference. You know, I know you guys don't see it day to day, but I'm just here to tell you that having that extra teacher has made a difference. Because if there's one thing other than home environment and parents, you know, that's the biggest impact for our kids and what they can do. But once they get to school, in my mind, class size is a big difference maker. And I felt that this year, even just having that seventh teacher in some of our classes, you know, some are bigger than others, but it makes a difference. So appreciate just the, even if it's a simple token of getting both those replaced so we can keep our numbers down. And I'm sure I can speak on behalf of English replacing our retiring teacher, Beth Perny, as well. Because we, simply put, we can get to the kids. We can get to more of the kids when there's less of them in our class. So appreciate replacing both of those, even if it really wasn't a thought for you. It was for me. So I was always a little bit paranoid that we were going to pinch back down to six, and glad we did not. So thank you very much. And as I said, the magic number today is nine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yules. Okay. We'll have a board member comment, so I'll start with Mr. Demoss.
Well, I ended last meeting with asking the community to encourage the General Assembly to step up to the plate, and they did. And so I think I have to give them credit for having done that. I do want to make sure everybody understands it's a, it's a step. According to one of the analyses that I saw, it gets us back to where we were in two thousand thirteen. And, and there's about another decade of, of erosion that still needs to be fixed, so they're not done. But it's, it's a good first step, and so I do appreciate that. Thanks to the donations, especially all the donations from TriCap. What a great, great group. They, they've been supporting the school system as long as I've been around. And, and they really did great things this, this, this year. It was such an exciting month for me. I got to participate in the color run at the intermediate school. And I got to tell you, I could not keep up with Jennifer Lee for, for very long. That woman has so much energy. But I got to squirt about several hundred children with orange cornstarch, and it was a lot of fun. And they seemed to be having a great time. And at one point, Ms. Lee said that one of the things she has missed is just hearing the, the excitement and the screams and the, and the fun. And that day, she heard it. And so that was terrific. Let's see, I, also, I got to, I've got to shout out to the girls' track team for winning WIC softball team. It's had a terrific year. I had the honor of announcing Bob Jones' five-hundredth career victory for the Mustangs. And it was a walk-off. It was, it couldn't be any better. And then just today, I found out that Luke Hayden was named District One Player of the Year in baseball for Indiana. And so, well-deserved, and what a talent. And it's, we come to the end of another, another strange year, second strange year in a row here. But it is, I, I look forward to things moving back to normal, closer to normal, including graduation. And I know that Mr. Yules will not be able to attend our graduation this year because his son is going to be receiving his diploma at another high school here in Monroe County. But congratulations to Ethan and to his dad, who I think just recently had a birthday, but we won't go there. So that's all.
Mr. Tucker?
Again, ditto what Mr. Demoss said. I, I texted a friend of mine after I saw Mr. Jones's five-hundredth win. And this particular, I had five-hundred wins for baseball, too, in Indiana. He said, rare air. And it's definitely was rare air. That's, that's pretty impressive. The, the length of time and the amount, number of kids, he's impacted over the years. So kudos to Coach Jones and the, and the baseball team. We're also just, just reflecting back when Mr. Yules was talking about graduation and Dr. Sanders, a year ago, sitting about three rows behind Mr. Irwin. And there's like three people in the audience. We had to take turns as board members sitting out there, seven hundred feet apart. I don't even know what the rules were at the time. But it just is so sad watching the kids walk up to an empty table. Somebody would lay something there, step back, get their diploma, and then walk off. And then everybody had to get squirted out of sanitizer or whatever at that time. And I'm excited about graduation. So I'm looking forward to it. Thanks to the high school folks for putting it all together this year. And I know all these celebrations at the elementaries, junior highs are going to be exciting for the kids. And we're getting closer to being back to somewhat normalcy. So, so thank you to all. And I did want to do a special shout out to Mr. Irwin. He put up with me for at least an hour and a half today, asking me questions about tonight's board meeting. And thank you. And I know Mr. Durnall definitely appreciates it, so we don't have to be here all night listening to my questions.
One quick question, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Irwin?
Well, I, again, I, just like you all, so ditto to all what you've said. It warmed my heart Thursday, Friday, and today to watch Alec drive out of town in his new police Durango with, with the school bus, kids going to Bradford Woods. I just felt so good that we had a police officer there. You know, with the way things are going nowadays, we just, we just never know. I also want to thank the, the leadership we have in this system. This, this school year, this is my twenty-second year, I guess, on the board, twenty-first year on the board. And I have never seen an upside-down school year like this, Jerry. And you've carried us through just like a great pilot. I said, you've, you've done a great job. Your, all your principals and assistant principals have been right there with you. And, you know, it's just very heartwarming to know that we have that type of people here with us. And, you know, we hate to lose Mr. Bland, but I think he'll have a good challenge over there at, at Owen County. Wish him well. But again, thank you so much for all you do for us. I really appreciate it.
That's definitely a team effort.
I was so excited to see Hannah Lane come to the board meeting and express her concerns and her vision for, for improved facilities for the softball. Just shows the, the quality of the students we have here, that they care about the school, they they care about what it looks like, they care about what goes on, and they're willing to come. And, you know, I can't imagine them coming and speaking on an issue that was during high school. So I really appreciate her coming. I thought that was great to see her here. We echo what everybody said. I mean, it's just a good meeting tonight, good people, great, great school corporation in all aspects. One thing that failed to do very much, but I really want to thank Katz and our sound and lighting people, Keith and Rick. We appreciate so much has gone on this year with resolutions and so many things that we've been doing. And Christine Bartlett has been there with us, helping us make sure that we do it all correctly every step of the way. And so I just wanted to give her a shout out as well. And, but most importantly, really want to wish the graduates well and hope that they're, you know, the last two years have been crazy for them, but I hope that their futures are bright and prosperous, and we really appreciate them and all the work that all of the school corporation people, all the teachers, all the administrators, all the staff, everyone makes a difference in those children's lives. They wouldn't be crossing that stage without each and every one of you. So we appreciate you so much. With that, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll have board signatures. Thank you.